That class ahead of mine. Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. The January meeting is in order and I invite you to join me in saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we have the roll call.
Arthur Wise.
Here.
Melvin Boyd.
Here.
Arthur Zerby.
Here.
Okay, all right. We welcome Arthur back to the board. And we now have a community open session, 30 minutes equally divided. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand to be recognized. Yes, sir. So far, you've got 30 minutes.
I pick up about 28 of them.
You may proceed.
Now, one thing, just in response to what we had spoke about the last meeting, you inquired about insurance being needed. Fire departments provide insurance. I did get an email. The Treasury Department is waiving that. The volunteer departments will not need to be providing insurance to the Obamacare situation. So that's been taken care of.
Amen.
I will hopefully, until next month meeting, have our fire department year-end report for you guys. A lot of work, so I'm hoping I can be there for you. One question, I guess, is there any of your township apparatus that has our private channeling?
Not yet. They are coming to do it, though.
I tried to call in one of the storms and got nobody. So it's like, okay, I'm calling for nobody that's there, so.
They'll be adding them.
Yeah. And another note on that, in my travels through multiple counties and townships, it's always nice to get back in the Brecknock Township, especially we've got some of the best roads and the storms are bad. I appreciate what you guys are doing, especially in putting the turnpike where it's much better than they are.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'm sure you're not alone in appreciating what the road crew has done. Okay, all right. We have minutes.
I have read the minutes and I move that we approve the minutes as read.
Okay, I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have some bills to approve. Total of $70,896.38.
I move that we pay those bills the amount of $70,896.38.
I second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And reports. Arthur, anything to add to the roadmaster report?
Just one thing. Phew, I traveled Route 30 today to York. Were you on it?
To York today?
I have never seen so many potholes and deep in my life. You can't even avoid them if there's that many.
They're all over.
You cannot. We're keeping after ours as fast as we recognize them, because it'll knock the front end out of line, it'll blow a tire, but I can't believe Route 30. It is terrible. I've never seen a road so bad. So, that really wasn't ours.
No, no.
Let me interrupt you for a second. There was a thing on TV last night I saw. I don't know where it was, somewhere down near Philly. There was a hole in the road and just beyond the hole in the road was a parking lot and all the cars that hit the hole were sitting there with all kinds of damage. Some had to be towed, some were just replaced a tire. It's really bad in some places.
This is the worst winter I've seen in a long time with the freezing thaw. It's taking its toll on our roads and everybody around us. It's bad.
And it's January 14th.
Yes.
I see you had an item on here about a fuel truck tearing up a swale.
Yeah, that was just on from our road there at Good's Greenhouse on the corner. Fuel truck got off to the side. We had cut a swale back from the edge of the road to get the water away from the road to save our base and he got off the edge of it and he's lucky that truck did not fall over. It was bad. So I had to take the backhoe and go out and reshape that swale.
Is he grateful enough to pay for the damages?
He took off.
Okay. All righty. On the next page, you pushed back snow in developments where cars were parked during the snowstorm.
Yeah, that's a problem for us. We have people in developments that they have a driveway. They will not park their cars in their driveway. They will park them on the street. We have to plow. I tell them, push the snow right up to it and go around. Then, what happens is, they'll clean the driveway, they'll park in the driveway, but here we have this snow and this big lump out onto the roadway. Now it warms up during the day and if it gives a rain, it gets worse. This freezes at night and here's this big clump of snow and if we don't go back a day later, even check a little bit two days later and remove these, some unsuspecting driver will come down that street, especially on a foggy night like tonight, hit that and just mess their vehicle all up. So we have to go out and do work after we're finished.
A lot of municipalities have the ordinances where you have to be off the road within X number of hours after a snowstorm starts?
They do have, some do have, and some specify roads, too. You know, like there's snow routes, for example, that cars have to be off. I have not seen one that requires everybody on all streets to get off, but I've seen designated streets, you know, considered as snow routes, that they have to be off.
We do have a problem, though, where you have a family that say they have three children. They all become of driving age. Mother has a car, father has a car, the children each have a car. When they open the garage door, there is no room in there for a car. It is packed full of everything you can imagine. So, we have people that have no options but to park on the street.
Okay. All righty. Okay. Mike, you're up.
Yes, you have a copy of my engineering report of January 9th. Couple of items tonight on page two. The Mike and Melanie McHenry stormwater management plan of your consideration tonight is a recommendation letter to establish financial security in my letter of January 3 in the amount of $4,999.12 and also a stormwater management agreement for your approval this evening.
I'll make a motion that we approve the security amount of $4,999.12.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And a security agreement. We need to.
Stormwater management.
Stormwater management. Are you satisfied with this?
Yes, actually Bill and I have reviewed that and we found it satisfactory.
Then I'll move that we accept the stormwater management agreement between Mike McHenry and his wife and the township.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On page three, the Sun Valley Campground land development. We requested a, we're doing a zoning review at this point. We did meet with a applicant's engineer for a sketch plan pre-application meeting. So you have a memorandum of understanding. We just received this, Carol, on Monday, maybe?
It's in this.
It's in the packet. I ask for, for you to consider motion to accept the memorandum of understanding for Brecknock Township and equity lifestyles for the Sun Valley campground.
I have questions before we proceed here. All right. In our storm events we've just had, I don't know if there's any Sun Valley Campground people here, but we have a major problem out there. That water comes down that driveway. They had three to four inches of solid ice for days. It comes across Maple Grove Road, even though we're only required for the normal winter maintenance. It was so bad, I can't let the road like that in our residence with solid ice all the way across the road. We're talking 60 feet of it, at least. So we're out there with the backhoe, scraping, sawing, sintering. That, I don't know if there's anything that we can do with stormwater in any way.
That's been happening for years, hasn't it?
Yeah, but it's, it's really been bad this one, but it's been bad everywhere.
Yeah, so much rain this year.
I think that's a good point, Art, and I kind of included you in that, you were available on that day when I was meeting with the engineer. I think that's something that we should absolutely look at during the land development process. They are coming in with a land development plan, preliminary plan in the near future, the next month or so. So I would, I would ask, as part of our review, we'll look at it and planning supervisors could probably improve that situation, or we can look at improving that situation for what exists today before they move forward.
I had told Mike, this is a situation where it could have been fixed years ago. I offered to cut a swale behind that campground at my expense so we could make safe travel for our residents and they turned it down. Now, not this group, but the people that owned it before turned me down. I would have spent a couple of weeks there and they turned it down. I don't know if you remember.
Yeah, and just for the board's knowledge, that topic actually was discussed somewhat and it sounds like there is a willingness to listen to some of those things to perhaps improve the current existing condition as part of their new land development for their additional units.
They want something from us.
Yes, they do.
Okay. Even though it's not part of normal winter maintenance, I guess it's PennDOT responsibility, but PennDOT is probably, would be hard to get out before the, before the ice melts.
Yeah. They may not come for days.
Yeah.
And out there on the S-turns on Five Point Mill Road beyond you, how it was so icy and it was reported to PennDOT and PennDOT said, that's not their problem. You know, we're back to the same thing when me and you went out with Mr. Enoch, that it's the township and the residents' problem because the water's coming off of our land onto their road. But yet, there's a lot of cases where if they cleaned their dishes a little better, they could greatly increase the capacity and the icy condition.
Yeah. Now, do we still need a motion on this memorandum?
Yeah, this is, the memorandum is just literally to allow us to invoice the applicant for the review of their land development plan.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve this memorandum.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. On page, sorry. Yes, aye. Sorry. On page four, just to give you an update, we did have the site visit with LTAP out at the Bowmanville Post Office, the intersection there with Mill Street. We went over warning sign recommendations. We had a couple of ideas. We're proposing to relocate the playground sign. We have to get in contact with county maintenance in order to do that. And I did respond to some other suggestions via email to the supervisors to answer some inquiries from some residents and so forth. If you have any questions, I'd certainly, we can discuss that at this time if you have any.
Okay. I think you've covered that. Anybody else have a question?
Are there going to be some sign changes?
The only sign change that was an immediate need is the playground sign is actually too far away from where the playground actually is. And there is criteria in the PennDOT manual that specifies that distance. Because it's a PennDOT road, East Maple Grove being a PennDOT road, we would need to contact county maintenance. They will actually come out and verify the location of where it can be put to comply with that criteria. And then that sign would have to be moved essentially to the new location and it has to meet the current standards of the PennDOT. So in other words, the symbol on the sign has to meet what the current regulation states and it should probably be a reflective sign.
What does the sign say?
I think it says playground right now, doesn't it? I think it's just the verbiage.
Is it just playground or is it a seesaw on it?
Well, I think, I think, I'm trying to remember what the sign is.
Yeah, I think it's just a seesaw.
The seesaw is the actual symbol.
Okay, then maybe it does say, but I don't think it meets, I don't think it meets the standard today.
I think, I think it says playground in plain verbiage. The actual symbol is the one that actually has to be used now.
Where is the sign at now?
Closer toward Bella Italia, toward the intersection at 625.
Okay.
If you're heading eastbound.
Should there be a sign on both sides of the?
There is one on the other coming westbound from over the Turnpike Bridge. There is a playground sign at the appropriate distance with the appropriate symbol on that. It's the other one heading eastbound that would have to be relocated. That was one of the concerns that was mentioned by a resident.
I mean, I've seen signs sometimes that say congested area.
Yeah, PennDOT is moving away, they actually, if you look at their design manual, they're moving away from the verbiage and they're using symbols. In the opinion of PennDOT, you basically gravitate toward a symbol quicker than you do for reading with actual verbiage on a sign. That's the theory.
I guess less people can read these things.
Probably also part of it.
One's gone out of high school.
So, so that's, that's the topic. And the last one is FEMA. FEMA had a meeting on January the 7th out in Mannheim, which I attended that meeting. We are looking at preliminary new FEMA maps that have come out throughout the county. We're in the process of reviewing those just for what I would call administrative issues such as municipal boundaries being accurate, name of streets on the maps are all accurate. FEMA has depicted the new floodplains. They are available for review by the public and also the township. I've already forwarded a copy of our floodplain ordinance. One of the requirements in order to stay compliant with FEMA flood insurance being issued to new mortgage holders, to stay compliant with that program, we will need to adopt a new ordinance at some point. Once those FEMA maps are reviewed by all the municipalities and ultimately approved by FEMA, we'll have six months to adopt that ordinance. They're looking at sometime in 2015 for that actually to happen, but they want to review all of your existing ordinances first to identify those areas that need to be upgraded to still comply with the floodplain insurance program.
And you told us that at some point, we have to notify every homeowner within that area.
That's correct, yes. That's something, we've done that in the past and we've worked real well with the township staff. We have a draft, what I would call a template letter, that you can basically just insert all the names and addresses on and usually that's something that between us and the township staff and actually the county may be able to help with identifying who actually would be affected by this. So we may want to contact the county as part of that process if you're in agreement with that. I've always felt that it was a good thing to get the word out to affected property owners. Some people don't know they're actually in the floodplain currently. Some people are obviously going to be affected because of the changes of the map. Some people who weren't in it before are now going to be in it later. So to get that word out and inform them of the changes and what their steps could be to obtain flood insurance and so forth to be protected, I think is a good step. The township's actually not required to notify, but I've always encouraged that the townships do, just as a goodwill gesture to the residents.
Do we actually have homes in a flood area?
Existing homes. They go back a number of years before it was all regulated. Yeah, a lot of non-conforming structures that may have been built over the years in flood areas and just as a result of remapping and the analysis are actually within the floodplain areas.
Will we have more homes?
No. The new regulations actually already prohibit that. So, and anything that comes out from now forward, from here forward, they're actually more restrictive against new construction. They basically deal with the ones that are already existing and out there today.
If we don't notify somebody that they're in the floodplain and they get flooded, what level of liability would you say that we would have? If any?
I don't think you'd have a lot, but there's always possible exposure to that. I don't, to be cautious, you should ensure that you get noticed to all the potential areas. I really think that's imperative that you do that.
I would agree. As they say, you can sue a ham sandwich.
Hey, I saw somebody else sue McDonald's yesterday for hot coffee.
Again?
Yes, another one.
Yep. So unless the board has any questions, I'll keep you updated as we go, but I thought I would at least clarify that if you're okay with notifying the appropriate homeowners at the given time, that that would be something that Carol and I would probably coordinate and send out.
Good, good. And I think you have an MS4 meeting on your agenda?
Yes, coming up in two weeks, I believe, on the 27th. Yes, I will be there and update the board at the next meeting.
Sort of becoming an annual event?
Yes, it is.
And is that in a circle or a straight line?
No, it's still going on the wheel.
All righty.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move that we accept the roadmaster, engineer, SEO and zoning reports as submitted.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Cassidy, solicitor items at this time.
One item, I have forwarded to you an agreement draft regarding an abandonment of a subdivision plan. This would be for Paul and Michelle Biases' subdivision from 2005. They then transferred property to HDB Holdings LLC. It's my understanding that the Biases and the HDB Holdings LLC are in agreement to abandon that subdivision plan. They have not taken any steps to construct or do anything to build on the property. I understand that a Delbert Martin has interest. I don't know if Mr. Martin's here this evening.
No, he's not.
He wants to purchase the land and, and the Biases, I think, are in agreement with that and HDB Holdings is also in agreement with that. And this would be a vehicle to have that subdivision plan terminated, the current escrow, financial security in place to be returned to the Biases and HD, I guess it would be HDB Holdings is the one that actually submitted it, as I recall.
Mike, you're right, yes.
And then, when a new plan is filed and submitted to the township by Mr. Martin, of course, the new financial security will have to be put in place at that time. So, that's what this agreement outlines, that Mr. and Mrs. Biases are terminating this, waiving any rights to the subdivision plan and then, of course, the return of the escrow.
Is the escrow still $85,000?
Carol, that's the figure I got.
Yes.
So, I mean, I had asked Mr. Martin when I had finished preparing this to review or at least submit this to, or present it to the Biases and HDB Holdings. I have not heard whether he has done so. But I think this evening, you could, if you have no questions or are in agreement with the document, you can make a motion to sign a contingent on, you know, the Biases and HDB Holdings having signed it before you.
The document looks good. I imagine it, there were some dollars expended in preparing this.
Yes. Mr. Martin, I think, is open to reimbursing, but I have not gotten any specifics with him concerning that.
And the expenses would all be by Apple and Yost?
Yes, nobody else was involved with drafting that stuff. I think he had anticipated settlement on the property by the end of the month, before the end of the month. So I.
Any comments, questions, gentlemen?
And you say they have signed it?
No, they have not. I have not heard back from Mr. Martin.
Yeah, I move that we approve it contingent upon the appropriate expenses being paid by Mr. Martin.
And that they have signed it.
And that they have.
And the Biases and the HDB have signed it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Park and Recreation Board, any?
No, they didn't meet last month.
And there is no old business. Moving on to new business. There's an additional item of new business that we'll add at the end here, an application of Mr. Roy Good for approval of a connect to a sewer, the sewer line. First item here is Pastor Lawrence Weed requesting a driveway waiver. The maximum allowable is 24 feet and his is 30 feet. Mike, would you like to?
Yeah, I'll give a board brief background. We had received some time ago, zoning application for the construction of an accessory structure, more or less a garage on a corner property in High Point Village subdivision. We reviewed that, issued the permit for the structure and also a new driveway to access that garage on the corner lot. What happened was during the construction, it was realized that, or observed that the driveway was actually 30 feet wide instead of the maximum 24 foot that's allowed in your ordinance. That was brought to Mr. Weed's attention. We did issue a letter from our office dated December 6th notifying Mr. Weed of that violation and that he does have the option to approach the board supervisors for relief because it is in the driveway ordinance instead of the zoning ordinance. So we did receive a request for that modification to allow the driveway as constructed at 30 feet wide on that property. So that's, that's what's before you this evening. I can answer any questions that you may have, if that's essentially a request. Is Mr. Weed here this?
Yes, I am.
Yes, he is.
Okay, I'm sorry. Did you have anything else to add?
Could I just?
You may.
Okay. The garage that I was building was a three-car garage and so I was not aware that, you know, the entrance would have to be narrower than the width of the three garage doors. That's what kind of had me, had me, you know, not aware of it. I was not aware of the ordinance and when I got the permit, I was not made aware of that. And then I received the literature from, from the office here and it said there's a minimum of 12 foot and so, and it didn't say anything about a maximum of 24. So I, you know, didn't think any further about that. And then we also called for an inspection for the forms and the driveway before we poured and we were told that nothing was needed because of the size of the building, was not over 1,000 foot. So then we just, you know, went ahead with the, with the pour of the concrete. Again, we are not trying to, you know, get around an ordinance that's off, okay? It was just, we were not aware of it, myself nor of the, the concrete contractor. The driveway slopes away from the sidewalk and away from the street going to the garage. But then coming out of the garage, it goes toward, toward the driveway. So, and then we have a five-by-five trough running the full width of the, of the driveway with a grate on top of it. It's a fiberglass grate that takes car tires and you can drive right across it, won't crush it or anything. And so the water then is going on the property. There's no runoff onto the highway or the street or anything of that nature. Again, we acted in good faith. I mean, it was nothing, we were trying to go around that ordinance at all.
So the water doesn't run into the garage?
It doesn't run into the garage. No, it does not.
From the street, it looks like it.
It looks like it, yes. Right in front of the garage, about two foot away there, there's a drain, a grate runs the full width of the, of the driveway and it's a five-by-five PVC trough in the concrete and it takes the water away from the, away from the garage. So we thought about that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, and we did look at, obviously, when it comes into the office, I look at it for stormwater compliance. It does meet the exemption criteria, plus that is in a development, so there is actually existing facilities in that development that capture and convey the stormwater runoff for the property. I did look at the permit application. I went back and did some research with this and what I would suggest, one of the things that, on the permit, it actually just says that it shall be constructed in accordance with all township regulations. I don't believe there was an actual supplementary sheet that should go along with that, that should identify that, that information. I'm not sure that was provided to the applicant, so I can understand where they may not have known what, what the max. known what the maximum width would be. So, I mean, that is something that I've already spoken with the code officer, and we're going to be including that from here forward, just so that everyone's aware of what the requirement would be. Not saying it may not fully address the issue because it may come up again, but at least they'll be made aware of the information in its entirety on the plan instead of just reference.
So it seems as though you acted in good faith?
I would say. I don't foresee, and I'm doing this a little bit out of time, we kind of know the ones that are, you know, fully trying to get away with something, so...
He does look shifty.
Yeah. They do, you never know, but...
Just a question?
Sure. You say it meets, and just to get this clarified, it meets with the stormwater ordinance?
Yes, it meets the exemption criteria under the new stormwater ordinance. However, that development also had stormwater facilities installed, along with curb and storm sewer as part of that development. So it's...
Each property is allowed 1,000 square feet?
It's 1,000 square feet. Now, I got to double-check what the zoning district would be for that. But there's also, the second part of that art is there's actually, because that development was in approved subdivision development, there's actually additional runoff that's allowed to enter those facilities within that development that was also checked. So, in other words, if someone wants to build a house, they're allowed a certain level of additional imperious on that lot, for a shed or some additional improvement on there without having to go through and having to put another basin or facility on the individual property.
The thing is not that we run into a problem in the future that the sheds ex mona size, and the imperious surface of all the concrete is ex mona size, and then you add the two together.
Right.
You know, not that we have somebody in the future come forward and say, "Well, there was so much imperious surface put on that one, why is mine being picked up?"
Right, that's a good point. That's a good point. We usually look at those a little closer because they are in development, so, you know, there is a level of stormwater management already occurring on the property. So we do look at that a little more closely when they're just over that threshold of 1,000 square feet.
What do we need here, Mike?
The request for the waiver, the modification, is to allow the 30-foot-wide driveway in the 24 maximum.
So we're calling this a waiver?
Just a waiver, modification of the width requirement for the driveway. It actually does comply with all the other regulations.
Right, yes. Yes, I make that motion that we modify, variant, whatever it is, to allow this driveway.
I second it. All in favor?
I actually think it's a little bit our fault.
Yeah, and all... Education.
You know, I think there's an education component, and I don't disagree with that. And that's something that, you know, I've already, like I said, I spoke with the code officer, I think that's an area that could be improved on to hopefully alleviate this from happening down the road.
Very good, thank you.
A three-car garage is legitimate. And can you have a three-car garage without being more than 24 feet? I mean, if, I think the reason you asked for the waiver was because you didn't want to have to turn as you went back from the driveway.
Yeah, it sort of looks like we need to change the rule. If it's a three-car garage, it could be a wider driveway.
Well, I'll be honest with you, I don't think, on the application, and I didn't look into this unless it's somewhere else on here, but it actually only gives the size of the structure, it actually doesn't indicate a three-car garage, unless it was somewhere else.
What was attached to it would have.
Okay.
It would have. Your drawing showed that, I remember it, yes. Yeah.
Another comment?
Sure.
Another thing we have to look at here is, Mr. Weed has a corner lot which is two front yards. So this situation isn't going to come up very often at all.
No.
You know. And he's plenty off of the side yard distances. As I walk down the street and seeing what some of the neighbors have...
How wide is that garage, actually?
The garage is 30 foot. I mean, no, excuse me, 36, 36 by 24.
So we really should maybe look at the ordinance to widen it if it is a three-car garage.
Um, that's something we could look at.
Yeah.
This is not the first time that it's come up. And if something comes up often enough, I think it...
It begs the question.
It merits a look at the ordinance. Okay. All right. Thank you for your explanation.
Thank you.
We have a prospective appointment at our reorganization meeting. We noted that Jerry Long no longer wished to serve on the zoning hearing board, which leaves a vacancy. And we have an applicant, Melanie McHenry, who is presently the alternate member, has expressed her willingness to move up a notch to become a full-fledged, full-time member of the zoning hearing board. And I'll be happy to accept a motion to that effect.
I make a motion that we accept Melanie McHenry as one of the members of the zoning hearing board.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And of course, this is contingent upon you finding an alternate. Not really. And delinquent real estate taxes for 2013.
I make a motion that we accept the delinquent real estate taxes from the tax collector for the year 2013, and the county amount 17,909 and 2 cents, and the municipal amount in 1,289 and 82 cents.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
That is, I think, a rather small number of dollars that we're due, and we congratulate our tax collector, who has also requested that we consider installing a lockbox outside the office for people to drop off payments when either the tax collector or our office staff is not in the office.
We have one of these drop boxes down at the sewer authority, and it has really worked out good.
And I see that the cost is $100, including shipping, and hopefully at least two keys.
Who actually requested this?
Nancy.
Nancy did? Are we all in agreement on this?
I talked to Arthur about where we might be able to put it so that it would be weathered, and we looked at a spot outside that he could make work.
I'll make a motion that we allow this to be purchased and installed.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it will be installed in an area where somebody approaching it can be seen on our surveillance cameras. And another prospective purchase for a filing cabinet.
Yes.
A filing cabinet that is fire resistant, in the amount of $925. And Carol, I believe you said that the papers that go in here are rarely referenced, but they are important.
That's correct.
Any questions, comments on that?
No, I see there was a more expensive one, matter of fact, almost double the price. Fortunately, we didn't accept that one. So I'll move that we accept this bid of $925 for a fire-safe filing cabinet.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
The difference in the cost is based upon how often you would have to use it. That each, both the $925 one and the one that costs twice as much are equally fire-resistant. But if we were going to be going in and out of the filing cabinet several times a day, you'd want something that was a little more user-friendly.
Does it make a difference on how long the files are protected in a fire?
They're all poured concrete on the sides of the filing cabinets.
So they all have the same protection?
They do. Yeah. It's just the quality of the drawers that's really the difference.
I understand.
Considering the proximity of the fire company, maybe we don't even need fire resistance.
That was another thought I was thinking of.
Alrighty, okay. We have passed that, and we have an activity list.
Yes.
For the Five Pointville Fire Company for 2014. Many volunteer activities in which they'll be serving the people of the municipality and beyond. The request is that the members be approved with workers' compensation for any activities involving these particular incidents. Any questions, comments, motion?
I'll make a motion if we extend protection for those events to the fire companies.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
And... Additional item is a request from Mr. Roy Good at 289 West Maple Grove Road. He has on his property an onsite sewage system that has failed. And Mel, let me ask you to explain this in your capacity as a authority member.
Mr. Good has a piece of property, let's say it's this size, and it happens to be 65 acres. Down on this side, there's a small three-quarter acre lot, used to be the butcher shop, and currently it's a home for a tenant. It has a septic system that is failing. Now, because of the situation of where the house is located on that lot, the well, the septic system appears to be actually on part of the farm lot. So, since there's two lots, and that really presents a problem. The cost of a sand mound is exceeding $30,000. So he's asking if he can hook into the sewer system. Now, the sewer runs right past his house on Maple Grove Road, but he's more than 150 feet off the road, so he was never required to hook up. And in years past, that worked out just fine. Now, of course, since he's that far off of the road, and since he's not in the sewer's service area, he can't hook up, unless we grant him a special permission. And in order to do that, he had to meet certain criteria. He had to have an on-lok system that was failing, that was actually checked by our engineers from Quinn Howler from Technikheim. He's also going to have to deed restrict all of the property, so he cannot develop it. That's the only way we will run a sewer line back to his house. Because if we run a sewer line back to his house, sometime later he may say, "Hey, I want to develop the whole property." So the only way we'll do that is if he deed restricts his property. He's agreed to that. So for that reason, it's come before the supervisors. The Sewer Authority Board last night made a recommendation to the supervisors that we accept this situation and we allow him to be hooked up to the Sewer Authority. So that's pretty much the way it is. Now, he also has applied for...
Preservation.
Preservation, right. And he told us he's number 75 on the list. He's next to the pig farm, if you're familiar with the pig farms that are down here. They also have requested to be preserved. And if they had been preserved already, it would be a moot point, but since he has not been preserved, we have no choice. But if he wants this line, he's going to have to deed restrict his property. Also, he's going to have to pay to have the line run, which I think he said would cost about $10,000. The hookup, of course, will have to be inspected by our engineers, and he would have to pay those costs. Also, the costs of the deed restriction, which he would have to prove to the township, and all the expenses involved in this from the township standpoint, he has agreed to pay. So based on that, the Sewer Authority recommends to the supervisors that he be allowed to hook up.
And this is in compliance with a policy that was established a little over a year ago. This land is in the agricultural area, and the board wants to preserve our farmland. And if you permit the incursion of a sewer service beyond the service area, you potentially open up that area to future development and future, much more development. So that is the reason for all of the safeguards that are put in place here, so that the effect of connecting to a property that has a failing system, and if the system were replaced with a $30,000 sand mound, there's no guarantee that the mound would have a lifetime of more than, it could be a year, it could be several years. But if there were a future failure, then there would have to be a connection to the public sewer system.
What would be the conditions under which the deed restrictions could be removed?
I have no idea. That's a decision that he's going to have to make, because if you're familiar with preservation systems, he could get money from the preservation board for letting go of his development rights. If he deed restricts, in effect, that will do pretty much the same thing. So that's a decision Mr. Good will have to make.
If the deed is a deed restriction, I guess it's a question for Bill, how is it enforceable? And is a deed restriction perpetuating the same way that land preservation is perpetuating?
You'd have to draft it in that fashion. And as I understand this recommendation from the planning commission, that they would prepare the deed with the restrictions for my review.
Exactly.
And then pay for my review, as well as paying for the engineer's review from the perspective of reviewing the plans and the connection and all of that kind of thing. So if someone does make a motion here, and if that motion is for approval of this request, I would suggest that the four conditions that the planning commission is recommending on page two of their letter to be specifically read into the record here.
It's the Sewer Authority.
Sewer Authority, I'm sorry, Sewer Authority. To make sure that that's clear. I mean, Mr. Boyd has already referred to them, but I think it'd be a good idea if someone's going to make that kind of motion to spell those out.
The first condition is that it's for an existing use and not for prospective development. The second is that the existing on-lok system is not functioning properly in the opinion of the SEO. The property would need to be deed restricted against any future development. And what does the SEO...
Those are the ones, those are the policies, the conditions for which you would entertain a waiver.
Right.
Okay? If there's a failing system, if there's a deed restriction...
It's the second four.
A professional soil scientist certifies that no other traditional on-lok system is feasible on the existing lot, and that the existing use of an existing building is for an existing use on existing building and not for prospective development. If those are met, then the waiver, you know, according to the Sewer Authority, you know, would be acceptable. And they went further, though, on page two of their letter to outline the conditions. It says, "The authority, after extensive discussion, voted to make the recommendation to the board supervisors that they approve the connection to the public sanitary sewer system with the following conditions..." with the following conditions," and then they list one through four. Is those four conditions that I'm referring to should be read into the motion, if someone's going to motion, make a motion to that effect.
I don't, you probably shouldn't make a motion since I'm on the sewer authority.
Okay. Arthur, anything to add?
I do.
I move that the steps be taken to amend the Act 537 plan in order to permit Mr. Roy Good at 289 West Maple Grove Road be permitted to make one connection to the public sewer system contingent upon Mr. Good deed restricting with proof of recording in the county courthouse not only the eight-tenth of an acre parcel of land, but also the surrounding 64.8 acre parcel of land from any additional connections to the public sanitary sewer system. Secondly, Mr. Good will have Pennsylvania DEP sewage facilities planning module prepared, reviewed by Brecknok Township, and ultimately approved by DEP to amend the Act 537 plan to include this property into the public sanitary sewer system with existing dwelling for use as a single-family residential unit. Thirdly, Mr. Good will have plans for the connection prepared and reviewed and approved by both the township and the authority. And lastly, Mr. Good agrees to pay for all legal and engineering costs associated with this project.
Just have one question.
Yes.
If the board wants to think about this for a minute, it says for a residential use. It doesn't say anything or do we even have to worry that he'd come to the zoning hearing board for some kind of home occupation or?
That would be a zoning matter. If they're looking to have a home occupation, that would be a
And there's enough land there that you could have a cottage industry.
Well.
Jerry?
I, to me, a cottage industry would be a separate use. Home occupation falls within the framework of a residential unit. Cottage industry is a little bit different. I don't know if there's a barn or an accessory building that might be on that property. Is there?
The thing, if a person like this wants to hook up, and they're figuring on it's a residential use, and they go to the zoning hearing board and get some kind of business established and going on there.
Well, I think that, I think the intention of this recommendation from the sewer authority is for the residential use.
Right now, that's one EDU. And of course, there's a tenant in there renting the place. Sometime in the future, he wanted to do some kind of a business, he may have more than one EDU to have to pay for, but I don't
This policy from 2012 says that the first guideline is that the public sanitary sewer can be for only the existing use and not for future development or a change of use.
Okay.
So to me, you know, a cottage industry would be a change of use. But the home occupation wouldn't be within the residential unit.
You could have home occupations that could use some significant amount of water. One would be
Well, no, I don't, well, I thought that most home occupations are of a very low impact, that there's mostly, and there's no additional employees, as I recall.
My mother had a home occupation in the house. She had, she was a hairdresser.
Okay.
She had two other women working for her. They had all the sinks going and all the water.
Well, I think if you state it as limited to the residential use, that'd be sufficient.
If I could be worded that way.
Well, that's what it says, for the existing dwelling for use as a single-family residential unit. That's what Garth read.
Okay.
Okay. We have a motion?
I make a motion for what Garth said, running off those for the approval of the request for the public sewer for Roy Good at 289 West Maple Grove Road.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. And that brings us to the end with one announcement. Next Friday, the 24th, we have an advertised work session to talk about our prospective road program for this year. The supervisors will be party to it, our engineer, and also a representative from LTAP Division of Pendott. And that'll be at 3:00 on Friday afternoon, the 24th. And it is a public meeting.
Do you want to go to the executive session to talk about that one item?
Yes.
I don't think you want to adjourn. I don't think you want to adjourn because if you want to act on it tonight, you have to do it in a regular meeting. Trying to make a point, otherwise it wastes on next one.
Yes, okay. So you
You go to an executive session now. You can say the regular business is concluded, but we will have an executive session. Yes.
Yeah, okay. We will have an executive session. Rather than having you all move, we'll go to another location. And then we will come back to take presumably further action.
Up to you to do that, but yes.
Okay, we are back in session. And our discussion concerned the property of Mr. Robert Weinhold on Laustown Road. Mr. Weinhold has signed a promissory note, and he has not complied with the terms. And I move that the board authorize Apple and Yost to initiate the necessary action on judgment.
Yes, I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Did you want to talk about the Nestor property?
Yes. Okay. The Nestor property.
Yes, this was a request, an update from a resident. We had met with them back in, I would say, September, October timeframe and the Conservation District to just go over options for a basin that has existed in the country matter subdivision. The complaint circulated around standing water in the backyard. We did pull the plan out, looked at the plan. There is a stormwater basin that basically encapsulates portions of three different properties, clearly identified on the plan with notes on the plan identifying ownership and maintenance responsibilities to the individual lot owners of where that basin is located. We did provide some verbal options for those folks to research in order to alleviate some of the issues that they're experiencing on the property. But we did say that it is ultimately their ownership and responsibility to come back with what their alternatives are going to be. And if any changes are going to be made to that basin, they would have to be provided to us for review, approval, before they would initiate the changes in the field. At this point, they're looking for input from the supervisors as far as what the township's contribution may be in helping assist them in that process further than just the advice that was given in the field. From my reading of the email, which I did forward to you all, I read into that as financial and/or engineering consulting to assist them through that process. So that would obviously be a decision for the supervisors. In my opinion, I did not, we did not respond to the email at this point, and we wanted to discuss that with you further before we responded back.
You have one basin and three owners sharing it?
That's correct. Where it's located in the subdivision, it's in the corner of the tract. And there are portions of three different properties that are involved. When that subdivision was approved back in the late 80s, the easement actually goes across three different properties in order to bound the swale and also the entire stormwater basin.
Has she talked to the other owners?
The only thing I'm aware of is that one of the other property owners was available on the day that I met with Rebecca Buchanan and myself. Just interest to find out, you know, what obligations they have as far as maintenance are concerned. And I'm not sure if they've had further discussions with the other owners or not.
The other ones are not complaining?
I've not received anything from them, though. Just this particular lot owner.
Is her situation worse than the others?
I would say the reason that she is probably initiating is because the discharge from the road system to the basin is located on her property. So where the water is actually collected from the street, there's a storm sewer that runs along her property line and then ultimately discharges on her property within the basin. And then from that point, it follows a low-flow channel. And the low-flow channel's of very minimal grade. So it takes some time to meander through the basin to reach the outlet point where it's designated at the outfall.
Do you think there's any ambiguity in the statements of responsibility on the plan?
No, they're actually very well-defined.
Was one of the options just to go in there with a shovel and clean the little ditch channel up?
Yes, that was actually relayed.
And then you can jump on the other side and clean a bit, a little bit away from the other side of the catch basin?
Yeah, there was a lot of, there was a lot of scenarios such as that, Art, that we run past.
I had met with some of them here several years back. And I told them, if you just get in with a shovel and you just dig a little bit till you get tired, maybe 15 minutes or a half hour, then do what you want and come back tomorrow and dig another 15, 20 minutes. In a few days, you'll have this open.
Yes.
It would be that simple.
Yes.
So it does dry out, probably in dry weather?
Yes, it does.
It's only in wet weather, and she has a wet condition.
Yeah. Which, as you know, this summer, we've had several significant rain events and, which
I have a lake in my backyard, too.
She was also concerned about snakes and mosquitoes, which I think you've got to argue is sort of a part of the way of life.
In that area, adjacent to a wetland on the neighboring property.
She's adjacent to the wetland, that's right.
Yes, I would, it is conducive.
She's going to have mosquitoes.
Believe it or not, I didn't really see many mosquitoes. And I know Rebecca has some experience with the larvae and so forth, and she really didn't see any indications of that.
That water flows pretty near all the time.
It does flow over time, yeah.
Mosquitoes don't really live in flowing water.
It's stagnant water is what you're looking for.
And if you take, you probably are never there in the summer. There is that many frogs and other little reptiles that eat them and they would develop along there. But she's going to have snakes, the wetlands right there, water snakes and water snakes.
Yes, it is.
I think we feel sympathy for her. I think we feel sympathy for her. Unfortunately, the deed plainly spells out that she's responsible for it.
Yes, I agree.
It's just a matter of cleaning it up with a shovel. It's that simple. It's nothing complicated.
So the question is, do we spend taxpayers' money to do something that isn't our responsibility?
Correct.
You mean as far as roach for doing it?
No.
Because I don't like to go into that development because anything you touch, somebody else is going to complain.
No, no. I meant as far as addressing her requests beyond the good advice that she's already been given. Well, since you are the source of communication, I would suggest that we authorize Mike to send her an email and just point out that the board reiterates the fact that this is the responsibility of the homeowner as spelled out on the plans. And that I would not be adverse to throwing in the additional bit of good advice that Arthur added here.
Yes.
I second it, that's a motion.
I agree with that.
I agree.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
I think that finally concludes our business. Thank you all for coming.